Good evening, everybody. I will call to order our regular city council meeting of November 10th, 2020, being held virtually via WebEx. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are all able to, please put your camera on and take yourself off of mute and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the citizens of this nation, to the Constitution of the United States, to justice for all. Thank you, everyone. The next item is the open forum, so I will pass it on to staff to just walk us through the open forum process again and let us know if anyone is on the line speaking at the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to remind residents that you can't participate live during our open forum portion of the city council meetings. If you'd like to participate live, you can call 612-861-0651, and you'll be connected to the meeting. Otherwise, you can always call ahead to myself before meetings or feel free to email me at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. Mayor, we currently do not have anybody on the line.
Thank you. We'll just wait maybe a minute or so to see if anyone joins. Okay, is there anyone on the line that is calling in?
I do not have anybody, Mayor.
All right, seeing as we have no open forum, I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of October 27th, 2020, and the city council meeting of October 27th, 2020.
Simon, Councilmember Simon Troutman.
Okay, the minutes have been moved by Councilmember Troutman. Was there a second?
I'll second them, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. And the minutes have been seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
The minutes have been up. So we do have two presentations tonight. The first one is the Community Services Commission Annual Report Presentation, and then the second one is the Annual Report Presentation by the Planning Commission. So we'll start with the Community Services Commission Annual Report with Chair Lisa Rudolph. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. It's my pleasure to be here and kind of fill you in on what we've done over the past year. It's been a little different, as I'm sure you can imagine. The biggest difference being our meetings have almost all been virtual, which has had a little bit of... on a lot of topics. But for the most part, we've been pretty productive and have accomplished a lot despite the challenges. So I'm happy with the progress we've made. I gave a quick rundown of what we've done. One of our big projects every year is to recommend council approval of our capital improvement budget, which we did as usual. We also advised staff on the replacement of play equipment at Madison, Washington, and Taft Parks. Members of the commission volunteered with the community. I was able to be out there for the Washington build. We approved the revised special event permit application and guidelines. We provided guidance and feedback to staff regarding the roundup for Richfield Parks Program at the liquor stores, which helped raise funds for the all-inclusive playground in Augsburg, the off-leash dog area at Roosevelt, and then Woodlake Nature Center bus scholarship fund for school groups. We also had regular updates about the replacement of the floating boardwalk after this little mishap at Woodlake. We discussed options and advised staff on the off-leash dog area at Roosevelt Park, appointed new returning members to the Foul Board, that's the Friends of Woodlake Board. And then as far as the COVID-19 situation, we heard regular reports from staff about COVID-19 modifications in the Rec Services Department, including virtual programming and self-guided events. We heard reports about the Hennepin County Youth Moves Grant received by Richfield Recreation to maintain active programming with COVID guidelines. And I was really surprised and pleased with how much Amy was able to pull off within those constraints. She did a great job with all of that. And then it's sort of our ongoing annual things. We appoint liaisons, too, and receive regular reports from a variety of other commissions, including the Planning Commission, Arts Commission, Friendship City, Friends of Woodlake Board, Transportation, Sustainability, and the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. And we also get regular reports from staff in a variety of areas, including recreation programs, Community Center, and Woodlake Nature Center, the pool, the ice arena, and mini-golf parks maintenance, and new this year, the Sustainability and Organic Composting Group. Looking forward to next year. We're looking forward to, again, prioritizing capital improvement items. We've already begun those conversations a little bit. I continue to hear regular reports from staff and other commissions providing feedback and guidance. Equipment at Christian Fremont and Augsburg Park in here, resurfacing the Vets Park parking lot, and resurfacing the tennis court in Madison Park. I'll show you another fun year. And that covers it.
Thank you so much, Lisa, for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council members about all the amazing work that our Community Services Commission has done in the past year? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Rudolph. I just wanted to say thank you on so many levels. There are a few things that our city does that I think have been so universally acclaimed and well-received as the dog park.
Right.
Everybody loves it. But also, the work you've done with an inclusive, a more inclusive playground that allows more of our kids to be able to play and engage and engage together. That's incredible. You have a fun commission that you lead, but I just want to thank you for your good work and just subsively and tangibly making our community better. So please, please share our greens and thanks with the rest of the commission.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Any other council members want to comment?
I'd like to add to what Councilmember Troutman said. In addition to just sharing accolades with the whole commission on so many of these great projects that you all got to be a part of, bringing into fruition and finalizing across the community, I just want to give an extra thanks to your great work in response to COVID. You know, the work of your Community Services Commission, the parks, outdoor spaces. Not only are they some of the areas that our community members and residents have their first interaction with the city government through their parks and the programming, but also in the middle of COVID, you've been able to help update the playground, help respond with adapted programming, and get things up and running, like the Universal Playground, like, you know, the updates on to the other play equipment, as well as the dog park, which community members really need to access and use right now in the midst of COVID. And then our staff had such a great Park Ambassador program as well that really helped respond to the resident needs around COVID, help give information, and just provide that extra touch point with our residents during this time that we'd never imagined going through. So additional accolades to the commission and to the staff for their exceptional work in being so adaptive and responsive and supportive of our residents during this extremely difficult time.
Thank you.
Any other comments from folks? All right, well, thank you so much, Lisa. And please, as Councilmember Troutman said, pass on the accolades to the rest of the commission, and we are very appreciative of your leadership. Thank you for the update.
Will do. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the next presentation that we have is the Annual Report out of the Planning Commission with Chair Quam. So I'll just pass it to Chair Quam.
Thanks, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. My name's Catherine Quam. I'm the current chair of the Planning Commission. Thanks for the opportunity to be here with you and share a little snapshot of what we've been doing this year. And if you'll bear with me, I'm gonna probably read most of this because there's too much to remember. But I first wanted to tell the public who the Richfield Planning Commission is and what we do, very briefly. We are commissioners that are Richfield residents who applied and are appointed by the city council. Our role is to carefully review land use applications and then give our recommendations to the council. These recommendations are based on the Richfield Comprehensive Plan as well as Richfield Zoning Code, two very important documents for us, and they are both available online on the Richfield webpage. Excuse me. One major component of the Planning Commission's decision-making process is the public hearing. The value of residents and developers' input at our public hearings is great, and it helps us see different sides of an issue. That input is especially important if it helps shed light on whether an item meets required criteria and is compatible with the land around it, because those factors are what the commission must base our decisions on, not whether we personally like something or not. Therefore, the Planning Commission has been known to sometimes frustrate the public if they feel unheard because of our final vote, and that's very hard for us. But to be fair, we feel we must apply the same standards and criteria across the board, and those were set before our meetings. I'd like to give a couple examples of items the Planning Commission considered in 2020. The ME is a mixed-use residential and commercial development project planned for 66th Street and Stevens Avenue. The Planning Commission recently recommended an amendment to the ME's final plan, which the council then passed. This amendment reduced commercial space and increased the number of apartments in the project. The commission received a lot of neighborhood input at our public hearing about the original plan, and I think we were able to successfully accommodate at least some neighbors' concerns about headlights in their windows and things like that, and also hoping that the reduction of commercial property in the project will be agreeable to them. Something the Planning Commission has appreciated is seeing our project proposals with a mix of housing types. The ME added some much-needed affordable housing units with the recent amendment. And although the lakeside at Lindell at 6400 Lindell Avenue came through the Planning Commission before 2020, the commission and council and staff were invited to tour the beautifully finished condominiums this summer. Providing this higher-end housing also fills a need and helps Richfield attract residents who might not choose to live here otherwise. The desired housing mix also includes accessible housing units, which a couple of the development projects worked very hard to include in their plans this year. In addition to looking at large projects like that, the Planning Commission voted on things like a variance allowing a new bubble tea business near Penn and 66th Street, and recently approved a variance allowing a central air conditioning units placement for a turn-of-the-century-era home, not originally built with central air conditioning in mind. These are just a few examples of issues that come before our commission, and often it's just one component of it, which we recommend to the city council to take action on. Now, I'd like to share a couple ideas I have for improving Planning Commission meetings and increasing effective public engagement. I recently got to meet with community development staff. One thing we discussed was adding a brief introduction describing the type of application the Planning Commission was voting on that night and the criteria that must be met. By doing this, the hope is that the commission and the public would get a brief review of the type of request and its parameters before diving into the specifics of that particular case or the people involved. Currently, they're woven into the staff report, so maybe starting it at the top as a reminder of what we are considering might be helpful to all of us. This introduction might also assist people calling into the public hearings in most effectively gearing their input to the specific criteria that we can consider. It's been harder since our meetings went online due to COVID-19 to feel connected to the public, so staff will also try to bring the live call-in option to the open forum portion of our meetings, not just the public hearing portion. We know that an engaged public with trust in the city's process is invaluable, and we welcome and invite their input. We also encourage them to apply to join us on the Planning Commission as we are losing one of our long-term members to the city council. Finally, I want to say that I'm proud to be on the Planning Commission, working with six other commissioners who have each such passion about serving the community and take their roles seriously. We'd like you to know we truly appreciate the council's support and all the support given by staff from community development and recently from our city attorney as we work through sometimes very tough decisions. Thank you for your time tonight, and I will take a question if you have one.
Thank you so much, Chair Quam, for the overview. Any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Supple.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you for your service and also to thank you for offering those suggestions. I think we always are looking for ways that we can improve the process. And so I think that's really, really important. And I know, having been on the HRA for a number of years before I was on the council, I understand all the work that the Planning Commission does, because you are like the first group that much of the community deals with. And I've appreciated over the years the thoughtfulness that you've listened to people with and the ideas that people have come up with to try and solve problems. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor. Councilmember Garcia, and then we'll go to Councilmember Wayland.
I just wanted to say to Commissioner Quam that her delivery and thoughtfulness of this report is very impressive and very much appreciated. And I concur, you know, with Councilmember Supple that you're the first commission that gets, you know, the heat or the accolades, whatever, when it comes down to the tough choices that you have to make. And the tough choices are always based on the ordinances and the rules. But it's great that you're communicating directly with the city staff and as chair and not necessarily waiting to do the business of the Planning Commission at meetings. So I offer, I thank you for you, Chair Quam, and the rest of the members of the commission, and appreciate all you do, and good luck.
Thank you, Councilperson Garcia.
Councilmember Wayland.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. I've had the honor to be the liaison to the Planning Commission. It's been fun to get to know you guys, see you at work, and I really appreciate, especially the suggestions you offered in that the Planning Commission, really more so than any other commission, is just by definition reactive. You can't be as forward, like, planning, like, you're literally responding to permits and applications that come in, but you're still, you and the group is still thinking about how do we, how do we plan ahead? How do we become more responsive and just interact better with the community? So I really appreciate that. It's, you could easily just be sitting and waiting for what comes in next, but I appreciate the forward thinking and the thoughtfulness that you and everyone brings to the commission. So thank you for sharing and look forward to the work to come.
Thanks for being our liaison.
Any other answered questions? Councilmember Troutman.
Hey, thanks, Mayor, and thanks for your presentation tonight, Commissioner Quam. And I told you this privately, but I'll say it in public, too. I just appreciate your leadership so much. It is like all the council members have said, a really difficult role, and particularly more recently with the personal acrimony and some of the ad hominem attacks that became a part of the conversation in the commission, which was unfortunate. I just appreciated your leadership there in setting a tone and a culture that doesn't drive conversations in that direction. And so I know that's not, that's not easy. We're dealing with people's homes and their lives, and it's tough. And I just appreciate your thoughtful leadership in the midst of that.
Thanks for your support.
I would agree. I think, Chair Quam, you've done an exceptional job in leading such a difficult commission, probably one of the most difficult commissions to be a part of because of how community engages and how highly technical and narrow the scope of your group is. So I just continue to welcome any feedback that you all have to continue improving the process, especially in the midst of COVID. We need to think out of the box, and we need to think about how to keep engaging with residents, because I don't know if and when, you know, I don't know when the after-COVID is gonna happen, and we can't wait for that. We have to think about ways to really stay connected now, and I appreciate you thinking about that. So whatever we can do to implement, I thought that idea that you gave of giving some context as to the scope of the decision or the item would be helpful for commissioners and community members. And if there's other ideas that the commissioners have or our public, we need to continue working together to figure out how we stay connected and we keep leading together in the midst of COVID. And I know that that's difficult for everyone. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Any final questions or comments on the presentation? All right, thank you so much, Chair Quam, for coming and presenting, and have a nice rest of your night.
My pleasure. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item, approval of the agenda.
Councilmember Supple, go ahead.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
A motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland to move the agenda and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the Consent Calendar, which goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar is Item A, and I do have an update to Item A. We had a message from the American Legion this morning that they would like us to pause their liquor license application. And so I will not be reading the American Legion, and I would ask that whichever council member makes the motion on this item that they note that we are deleting the American Legion from the list of Item A. So, Item A, and bear with me, there's a lot of text. Consider approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 8th, 2020 for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor licenses for 2021 for Al Tejaban Mexican Grill LLC, doing business as Al Tejaban Mexican Grill; Thompson's Fireside Pizza, Inc., doing business as Fireside Foundry; Frenchman's Pub, Inc., doing business as Frenchman's; BBC Richfield Pizza LLC, doing business as Giordano's of Richfield; Wiltshire Restaurants LLC, doing business as Houlihan's Restaurant and Bar; Los Sanchez Taqueria II LLC, doing business as Los Sanchez Taqueria; Lynn 65 LLC, doing business as Lynn 65 Kitchen and Bar; Lindell Smokehouse LLC, doing business as Lindell Smokehouse; and the Fred Babcock VFW Post 555. Item B, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 8th, 2020 for the consideration of the renewal of pawnbroker and second-hand goods dealer license for 2021 for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc. Item C, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on December 8th, 2020 for the consideration of the renewal of on-sale wine and on-sale 3.2% malt liquor licenses for 2021 for Chipotle Mexican Grill of Clock Colorado LLC, doing business as Chipotle Mexican Grill; Devani's Inc., doing business as Devani's; Pizza and Hot Hogies; Joyce Pataya Thai Restaurant LLC, doing business as Joyce Pataya Thai Restaurant; Paizan Inc., doing business as Khan's Mongolian Barbecue; LRFC LLC, doing business as Local Roots Food and Coffee; Minnesota, oh, I'm sorry, Kama, Minnesota Junior Hockey Group LLC, doing business as Minnesota Magicians, located in the Richfield Ice Arena; My Burger Operations LLC, doing business as My Burger; Patrick's French Bakery, Inc., doing business as Patrick's Bakery and Cafe; Henry Tao, doing business as Red Pepper Chinese Restaurant; and O'Reilly Custom 6 LLC, doing business as Sandy's Tavern. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution to accept a grant of $10,601.55 from the Office of Justice Programs for Bulletproof Vests. Item E, consider approval of a request for a new second-hand goods dealer license for Marquee Jewellers, Inc., doing business as Wedding Day Diamonds, located at 700 West 78th Street. Item F, consider approval of a contract renewal with the Dussa Minneapolis for 2021, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021, for auctioning forfeited vehicles from Public Safety Police. Item G, consider a resolution authorizing a 90-day extension for recording the lunes of Richfield Platte. Item H, consider the renewal of the agreement for assessment services with Hennepin County. And I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar. And again, I ask that whichever council member makes the motion does note that we need to delete the American Legion and Item A.
Mayor, I will move the consent calendar with the exception of Item A, which is deleted.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Is there a hint?
I'll second. Can I clarify that in Item A, it's just the American Legion that's being deleted? Is that okay with the maker of the motion?
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Garcia with an amendment that the American Legion needs to be removed from Item A, and the item was, the motion was seconded by Councilmember Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
The consent calendar has been moved. The next item goes to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item for consideration is the public hearing to consider an appeal to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals regarding the Planning Commission's denial of a variance to allow 25.5-foot driveway at 2015 Forest Drive. And I'm just going to, I don't plan on reading the entire executive summary. It's a little lengthy, and I think, I think slightly differently about some of the, some of the facts in the summary. And I think the mayor also had a thought. And before we move into the hearing, I wanted to give her a chance to speak also. But I think before we even have this hearing, I mentioned it just briefly. When Commissioner Quan came in, I think there have been few council or commission meetings that I've seen where, where... where there was rhetoric quite like there was this. And I just want to be clear that the rhetoric that was shared was not by the the residents that are here tonight, um but were particularly by a commissioner. And um and I spoke to that commissioner privately and um you know, he he's very strong in his opinions. And in fact, I'm inclined to agree with his opinion, but he did regret um what he said and how he said it. And um and he said he was comfortable with me sharing that here tonight. Um, and so I did, I did just want to call call one, call it up, but then also set it aside to say those comments are are probably are wholly separate from from the 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 issue that we have here. And um the issue that we have here is that in two thousand nineteen, the owners of um of two thousand fifteen Forest Drive applied for several variances in order to construct uh new attached garage. And the variances were for a side setback reduction and the permission to exceed the maximum total number of accessory storage buildings and permission to exceed the total allowable square footage for accessory and garage space. In the initial plan submitted with the variance application by the owners, uh contractor included a driveway that was wider than the twenty foot maximum width permitted. Um, and the contractor was was um granted the variance, but subsequent to the granting of the variance, there was a letter several weeks later uh directed to the contractor, but never to the residents themselves that indicated that the um uh the twenty five foot driveway would not be uh would not be permissible. And um so subsequent to that, in the spring of twenty twenty, without first applying for a driveway permit, a twenty five point five foot wide driveway was constructed. Um, planning staff um again contracted the contacted the contractor. The driveway permit was required and that the driveway must be modified to meet the twenty foot requirement that had been previously explained um to to the contractor. Uh, staff discussed the situation both with the contractor and the property owners, stating that the excess pavement on either side of the curb cut would uh would have to be removed, but that a walkway could remain adjacent to the garage. Staff explained that the criteria for variances um and that um they would not be able to recommend an approval of a variance uh for the driveway. Uh, the property owners uh opted to apply for a variance to allow the driveway to remain as um as is. And then on September twenty eighth, uh finding that the criteria criteria were not met, the planning commission denied the variance in uh in a in a close three to four vote. The property owners are appealing that decision uh of of the planning commission. And the city council is serving as uh the Board of Adjustments and Appeals may hear and decide the appeals of any decision uh made final by the the planning commission. In this, at at this point, I wanted to just turn turn things over to our mayor and just give the mayor, uh she she had uh some comments and thoughts about how we might proceed. I wanted to just uh uh turn the turn the floor back over to her before I actually uh open up the hearing.
Actually, um, I wanted to pass the staff. I I think there might be some clarifications that staff wanted to make is um. I don't know if I should pass it to Director Stark or to um Melissa.
Sorry, I can start off. You know, the variance criteria that is set forth in state statutes is um is pretty specific and is very binding upon cities. Uh, and so we just uh really are relying upon what the state statute requires and states. Uh, the the three criteria that the proposed use must be reasonable. Uh, two, the landowner's problem must be due to unique circumstance, two circumstances that are unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. And I would stop with that and say the unique to the property portion really is intended to be something um that's unique about the physical characteristics of the property. You know, for example, somebody can't put a a driveway in the required location because there's an existing tree there, or they can't have the setback on one side of the house uh because there's a there's a swale there or something like that. And the requirement that it not be um caused by the landowner uh in the in the courts has always included the landowner or those um that are working uh for the landowner as a as a contractor would be. So in this case, um staff has not been able to find that there is a um the circumstances that are unique to the specific property, nor that the situation was not caused by the landowner. Um, and then the third is that the variance, if granted, would not alter the character of the neighborhood. So I think that uh criteria one and three um are are some things that people could um could discuss and find different conclusions to. But the fact that all three criteria must be met, uh staff just um and we would like to. We've tried, we would like to find the rationale for it meeting criteria too, but we just have not been able to reach that conclusion and nor has the planning commission. Uh, with that, I uh if Melissa has things to add.
Thanks, John. I I just want to clarify again that practical difficulty standard. Um, and the idea here is that there would have been a practical difficulty that existed on the property prior to this driveway having been constructed. There would have had to have been something that prevented them from um constructing a complying driveway. It's not an after the fact consideration. It's was there a difficulty that made it impossible for them to comply with the code or exceptionally difficult to apply apply with the, I'm sorry, comply with the code? And in this case, um, we cannot find that. The applicant did, um, as was mentioned, submit uh for several variances for the property. Their contractor submitted that, but the applicant, um, the landowner was a party to that application. And as the staff report states, in the eyes of the law, the landowners are ultimately responsible for what happens on their property. As part of that application, staff uh returned comments that said uh in writing that the maximum driveway width in this district is twenty feet. And a revised application was submitted with a complying driveway. So um this wasn't something that any party wasn't aware of. Um, although it could have been a mistake, it's also not something that they couldn't have complied with. So again, it's not an after the fact criteria. It's something that would have had to have been present prior to the construction of the driveway.
And I would just add that this is uh this is the least favorite part of our job uh in planning and zoning, uh acting in this kind of regulatory uh manner. Um, and we we, I can't stress enough how how much kind of mental gymnastics we went through to try to find a way for this to meet criteria two, and we just cannot uh, we cannot find a way. Um, if, as is stated in the alternate um recommendation, you know, if council members do uh can identify a way that it does meet all three of the criteria, uh, we would uh and and maybe um see Attorney Teach and could touch on this, but we would um certainly discuss those that um that rationale and try to formulate that into um findings for a future uh consideration, but we wouldn't be prepared to do that tonight.
So I had um a a separate question not related to making the point. And I'm going to ask, I want to ask if if other council members have uh anything in response to what staff was just saying and finding the findings. I I'm looking at the staff report and well, I wanted to just have you walk through for the council and for the public. Um, uh, the process and the scope of decision making that the council has. I know that uh it's in the council report, but the full report out wasn't read. So maybe Attorney Teach and you can just walk us through very briefly um the process for folks.
Um, sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So staff has already done a very good job of, you know, kind of explaining the criteria for the legal criteria for the variance. And it's, you know, it's explained in the staff report. The three factor practical difficulty test is the legal standard that must be met. And all three criteria need to be met in order to to grant the variance. So I think it's it's important to um explain to the council exactly what role you're you're you have in in considering the appeal tonight. So when a council is considering a variance, it's acting in what's called a quasi judicial capacity. And what that means is that the city's role is limited to applying the legal standard to the facts that are presented in front of you. Um, you're really essentially acting like a judge in applying the law to the facts in front of you. If if the council determines that all three factors have been met, then it may um um, you know, overturn the planning commission's decision and grant the variance. But it will be important for the council to explain its rationale and specifically id identify facts to um show that the that the statutory criteria have been met. So getting back to the quasi judicial role, another um thing to mention about that is that when you are acting in a quasi judicial capacity, a court, if this were being reviewed by a court, um, the court would would give the city council less deference in that kind of a decision making capacity. Uh, as compared to other kinds of decisions that the council makes, such as adopting zoning ordinances, um where you're acting in a legislative capacity, the council has more discretion with those kinds of things because they involve policy kinds of decisions. And so when a court is reviewing a legislative decision, it will give a lot of deference to the city council for those kinds of things. But when a court is reviewing a quasi judicial decision, such as what you're making here tonight, um, a court would give the city council less deference because there are specific legal criteria that need to be uh um met and applied um as part of your decision making. So I I hope that's helpful, um, Mayor and Council. If anybody has any questions about that, I'm happy to try to address them.
Are there any questions on council from council members on the process for this item?
I have, oh, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One, could you just perhaps explain the to the council the significance of of the judge granting deference or not grabbing grant granting deference to our opinion? So I'm not sure. I mean, I think that would maybe give us pause. It would create a risk if somebody were to sue the city or the Chrisnicks because they were unhappy with the 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 decision that we were to make. But I just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if everybody understands what judicial difference is and why, and I'm not really sure why that's particularly relevant to our decision.
Um, Councilmember Troutman and um council. So I guess the reason I raise that is that um to emphasize that the decision you're making here tonight were to be appealed because a property owner certainly would have a right to, if they were unsatisfied with the decision that you make, um, could challenge that in court. And so that is the reason I mention it um in that um at that level of review, um, you know, making sure that the council understands that the 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 amount of deference that a court would give to your decision. So in other words, a legislative kind of decision is much easier to to defend um in front of a court, in front of a judge, because you have a lot of discretion. You have um a lot more ability to to make policy kinds of decisions. With this kind of a decision, um, you don't have as much discretion. You have the legal criteria and the statute that you're required to apply. And if you don't, um, then it it's it's possible and likely that a court would overturn that decision if you're not um correctly following and applying the legal criteria.
Council, could you could you explain also? Um, I heard I heard a couple of things from staff that was that was news to me. There was a reference that the standard was it has to be impossible or nearly impossible to create a practical difficulty. Is that 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 seemed to be not my understanding of what it takes to get a variance? Um, and so I was, I was, I was, I was confused. I was just, I just wanted to understand that. I also was curious, I also heard from from Director Stark. And maybe this came from you. When we spoke about the issue, I'd understood your reading of the statute was that the um that issue number two, item number two, the practical difficulty not of their own making, could only be read a certain way. Was that based on your reading or was that based on on case law that you had you had seen? I thought it was just based on your reading, but maybe I didn't understand that.
Um, Councilmember Troutman, I'm not quite sure I'm understanding your question. Um, factor number, factor number two, um, just based on the plain language of the statute, it's that there must be, um, I mean, I don't have the specific statute in front of me, but the staff report recites it accurately. Um, that the landowner's situation must be due to circumstances that are unique to the property. I mean, that's language that's taken directly out of the statute. And so um, the scenario that that contemplates is that there are physical characteristics of the property that make it um difficult for the property owner to to comply with the the requirements in the in the in ordinance. Um, and so that strict enforcement of the ordinance would not be possible. Um, so I'm not sure if I'm directly answering your question, but no.
And I feel I I feel like we're getting maybe bogged down a little bit. But my two questions were, one, I would, I, it was a new standard for variances, which is that things have to be nearly impossible. And that's not a standard that I've I've, I don't think we followed that with other variances. That's not, that seems like a new standard to me. And and there was a reference to case law. And if that's the case, that there's case law that's been said, but when we talked on Friday, we weren't referencing case law. So I, that was, that was, that was, that was news, that was news to me. But I, maybe I want, maybe without answering that, um, Mayor, you had you had talked about potentially wanting to um to possibly table the matter, which I think could be could be could be fruitful. Though I wanted to maybe throw it back to you.
Uh, so it's not in relation to meeting the criteria. I do find from my perspective that it would be difficult in meeting the criteria. What I wanted to ask staff is um, in the staff report, it talked about difficulty in in complying. Was the compliance, uh, if it's turned down, was the compliance, uh, was that discussed with the applicant and the contractor of what it meant? I know at the planning commission, it was unclear as to what the options would look like for if it, this was, if the variance was not granted, what the options were for the applicant to come into compliance. Do we know that um from the applicant or the or staff? Has there been a meeting about that?
Mayor, we've had um several conversations with the homeowners and the contractor to discuss coming into compliance. You know, um, it's not staff's role to design a compliance situation. We have made some suggestions. One that was mentioned in the staff report was cutting the driveway along the sides up to sidewalk that was constructed. Um, the contractor threw out ideas like installing some permanent planters along the sides of the driveway. Staff's response was always, please put together a plan and we'll review it. Um, the idea here is to to bring the The idea here is to to bring the driveway into compliance. I think that there maybe is a little of a little gray area on what compliance looks like. For instance, staff suggesting that you cut the driveway up to the sidewalk and allow what remains in front of the driveway to be considered a continuation of that sidewalk. That is a suggestion that we made. We we were never provided with a plan for an alternative, though.
So my suggestion was going to be to table it to the December eighth meeting and better understand exactly what, how the applicant can come into compliance and have those options included in the in the next meeting. Is that possible? Councilmember Director Stark.
Madam Mayor, I would just kind of reiterate what Melissa said that, you know, we, it's, it's problematic for us to be in the position of designing that for the applicant. So if that is the action you take to table this until the next meeting so that some alternate means of complying could be discussed, we would just ask that the applicants provide some some idea, a proposal of how they would like to comply rather than having staff design that for them.
Mayor. Councilmember Garcia, and then I saw Melissa had her hand up.
What what I, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak against tabling. You know, every time, a lot of times that, you know, have been on the council, people have asked for us to overturn what the planning commission decision they've made. And the planning commission made that decision. And we and we appointed that planning commission. We, I respect the planning commission and their decision. I also think staff is is right on in in the decision they made. The other thing is that we don't want to set a precedent. Every time that we have something come up that we have to rule against the planning commission, it should only be under unique and unusual circumstances. But this is not the case. If we continue to try to fix a problem, once it gets to the council, I think we're out of line. I think that's a wrong thing for us to do. We're there to set policy, not to change ordinances, not to change statutory languages, but just to follow what's what's the rules and the and the judgment that has already been made. I, I really think that coming to the city council is is not the appropriate way to handle a situation like this. And I would, really, it's it's poor public policy if we were to do this in not all, in in precedence. And and it's just, it just smells bad. And I know we want to help people out. I know we want to advocate for them. And I know, but the thing is, if we start doing it for for one person, we have to do it for the other and the other. And where do we draw the line? So that, those are my thoughts, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Melissa, I think you're going to say something as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And maybe Mary can help me out here too as well. But my thought is that we can work together on with the applicant on a solution to bring the driveway into compliance. But that doesn't change the facts of the matter before you. What you're considering is whether or not you should grant the variance to allow them to have a driveway that doesn't comply. You're finding that they meet those three criteria. That isn't going to change. That argument is not going to change between this meeting and the next. If you decide that they don't meet the criteria and they need to bring the driveway into compliance, then staff will absolutely work with them on what that needs to look like. But whether or not we need to continue a public hearing and come back and discuss that with the council, I would think that 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 isn't really what we're asking of you tonight.
Yeah, I would agree. I think if if there's anything that should be continued, I would think if we if we do uphold the planning commission's decision and deny this, I believe I saw in the staff report that the standard is 60 days to bring it into compliance. And I could see potential, like, I don't know what hardships that might create doing outdoor work when there's now snow on the ground. I don't know anything about concrete work. Like, I would be open, if that's the direction this went, to considering an extension on on that if needed, which we might not know tonight. But really, like, we're, we're talking around the issue that it it comes down to point two. And I guess I'm curious for Councilmember Troutman, it seems like you have a different interpretation of criteria two. And I guess I would like to hear that and and make a decision based on that because I I think that's really what this boils down to.
I disagree with with that comment. And the reason is because, quite frankly, you know, the only thing before us is do we uphold the planning commission's or 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 not? Or do we overturn the planning commission? It's that simple. I went to law school for a couple of years. I didn't go, I didn't finish law school. But I tell you one thing, I learned enough to know that this is the way, you know, we should approach the law and 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 follow it. So to, for us to set our own ideas or our own agenda on this, I think is wrong.
So would Councilmember Troutman like to respond? And then I saw Councilmember Supple's hand up.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, thanks to both Councilmember Wayland and and Councilmember Garcia. I, I respectfully think a little differently about our role in this moment. I agree that we're not setting policy here, and this is not actually a policy decision that we have. But it's a quasi judicial proceeding where we have to to look at the facts and apply them to the law. And we're not setting a broad policy, but we're trying to figure out what the facts are here. And specifically, one of the commissioners said, I, this is actually a decision I would like the council to speak to. And so I'm going to make this decision. But she she made it very explicit. But ultimately, I hope that the council may take, may may use some more discretion here. And that was, that was the, that was the commissioner's comment in that, in that context. So I do, I do read the law differently where it says a there is a practical difficulty not of your own making. I would read that, I I think you could read that honestly in a couple of different ways. You could read that one way to say, you know, that the the contractor is the agent of of the individual, of the of the homeowner, and therefore doesn't matter what the contractor did. They're just acting on behalf of the of of the of the homeowner. And so when the city tells the contractor, that's as good as telling the homeowner. And if the contractor makes a a mistake, then then the the homeowner is liable. I think there's also a more, a less narrow way to read that statute, which is to say that in a circumstance here where the homeowner never knew. And I think part of the problem is, and I know this for a fact because I've heard staff say this, they don't believe the Chrisnicks. They think the Chrisnicks are not being forthright. And I've met with them several times. And I do.
You know, you know, Councilmember Troutman, I I'm sorry, but I have to, you never, you should never question the motive of, you know, of the of the the staff that worked for us. And and I I don't appreciate what you said.
I, I think I, I understand that. I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth. I'm repeating what I heard, and that's different.
Well, then I'd want to hear from whoever you heard it from.
I, they're welcome, they're welcome to speak to, I, I, we, we don't normally interrupt each other. And.
No, but that's the standing issue. The other thing is, is that we're looking at facts, not alternative facts.
Going to say to Director Stark, I saw his hand raised. Director Stark.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that I don't believe I ever said that I didn't believe the applicants. That's not the case. I don't know enough about the situation. I haven't, quite frankly, I haven't talked to the applicants about this. I do believe that if the contractor made the mistake, which it sounds like is the case, and and actually, I was privy to an email in which the contractor, it looked like the contractor was was stating that they'd made a mistake in doing so. You know, if I were to hire a contractor that made a mistake by not pulling a proper permit or getting a proper approval that resulted in in costs to me, you know, I would certainly expect that contractor to to remedy the situation. So I'm not aware of staff ever stating that we didn't believe the applicants or that we questioned the motives of the applicants. And so I would take exception to that.
Councilmember.
So at this point, I think we have a fiduciary responsibility to look at the facts. And I think we need to consider whether or not we are setting a precedent. I also would like to follow up on Councilmember Wayland's point of, is it possible if we, after hearing the open or the public hearing and hearing the facts and making our decision, if we would decide to uphold the planning commission? Is it possible to give an extension for the time to come into compliance, given the weather?
Yeah. Councilperson Supple, I would, I think that the appropriate thing to do would be to ask the applicants to provide staff with a plan for how they would come into compliance within a period of time, within the 60 days. And I could approve that plan pending, you know, the the right weather circumstances that would allow its implementation.
Well, get, given that, can, let's do this. Can we open the hearing? I'd move that we open the hearing unless unless the, I don't know if the mayor's moved that we table this or if it's that it's motion or if it needs to be withdrawn. But we would conduct, so we would open a public hearing here to adopt a resolution whether or not to to deny or approve an appeal from the decision of the planning commission and affirm the planning commission's decision to deny a variance for a driveway wider than the allowed maximum at 2015 Forest Drive. So if the if the hearings now open, do we, Attorney Tejan, would we hear from the the residents at this point? Staff's already had an opportunity to speak. Council spoken, what would be the appropriate way to proceed?
Mayor and council, I I agree. I think at this point, I would suggest giving the applicants an opportunity to be heard. And then if there are any others on the line who want to be heard, to to allow them to speak as well and then close the public hearing, and then the council can have further discussion.
Mayor, I could just step in quick. So as we open this public hearing, we just remind you that you have three minutes to speak. Council will not reply directly to you, but we'll answer things after that public hearing is closed. And then please state your name and address before you begin speaking. Thanks.
Go ahead. I see we have someone here for the hearing. Hello, the applicants, hi.
Hey, how are you? Good evening, Renato Kursenik here with my wife Christine, sitting next to me. We're the applicants at 2015 Forest Drive. Thank you all for your time tonight, Mayor, Councilmen, and 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 the rest of the group, I'm sorry. Couple of facts on this that that I heard being discussed. I would like to just clear and we'll we'll let you, I don't know what the processes to to respond to that. One of the things, I think there's a, there, to start off with the fact that we received the variance for the larger garage. This happened in July of last year. So we were given a variance. We were awarded variance of a garage that's 25 feet wide and had the doors, two doors on the drawing that on the outside of those doors, we are at about 21 feet, which means that if I put a 20 foot drive in, I am inside the doors of my garage on each side by about three to six inches. So that in its, in its start of it, it's a practical difficulty in making this garage, this driver to to code that is requested. So I would like for you to consider what was done in a variance prior in the fact that the garage is wider and how that is affecting the driveway. Now, we were not aware of the driveway requirement for the for the for the variance. I know that that ultimately we are responsible for that and will take this responsibility, but this is not of our own doing. We have, we have gone through this process. We followed the 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 play, the 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 steps. And I can assure you that we've never received a recommendation from the city on how to remedy this. I know it was mentioned tonight that this was shared with the contractor, but in the same way, for some reason, this was never shared with us. So I've never heard of planters being mentioned. I'm not sure what was that all about. Or recently, on Monday, I actually had a conversation with Nellie, who mentioned that we could do something about a driveway going up to the sidewalk, which is about 13 feet away from the garage, going away from the, I guess, towards the 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 foot, the street. The one thing, the one thing I wanted to add is that we did follow the requirement of a 20 foot curb cut. But the way the rest of the garage is set up, it 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 didn't, it didn't match to be a 20 feet. There would be a practical difficulty for us to use the garage. Even if we go to a 21 foot width and you line up a car to go in the garage, you're stepping now into the dirt or snow or whatever if you're outside of the, in the driveway. So I I'd like for the for the planning commission to consider those details. And this is exactly what I think Councilman Troutman and and was mentioning that I don't think we've had enough conversations directly between the city and us, the homeowners, on how we can remedy this situation. We want to remedy it. We want to find the resolution. But it is, it is the way, just saying at 20 feet width, it doesn't, it does not work. We are inside the doors.
And and thank you, Renato. And I I just wanted to say as well that we absolutely want to work with the city of Richfield to find a solution that doesn't compromise anyone on this call, anyone that's, you know, going to move to Richfield in the future, anyone that lives in Richfield today. We just want to share an opportunity for us to work together to find a solution. And that that's our intent of of following through with the planning commission variance as well as the appeal. And we absolutely plan to comply with what we can come up with with the city of Richfield.
Thank you, thank you. I think that's just just over the the three minutes. And in, is there anybody else from the public that wants to, wants to comment on the on the public hearing?
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. I currently do not have anybody else on the line.
I just had a question. When you were counting the three minutes, was that for each person or for both of them together, since it's two people?
Oh, that's a really good point. I, there there are two people. So if you, and and I think as a. and and I think as a rule, we we try to give folks a time to finish their their thoughts. So so I want to give you an opportunity if you have more time. It did not. It's one screen, but more than one person.
We feel very, very heard tonight, which I we are super thankful for. I don't know that we all knew enough about the situation when we met in variance meeting. We've learned a ton about some existing cases that we were compared to. We've learned a ton about process and and the way the city of Richfield works, and we're very, very respectful of the way the city of Richfield works. And we do not want to compromise anything that anyone on this call would want to do for the city. We want to work with the city of Richfield to resolve this.
And I and I I'll just to add, and and I don't know if this is taking up my time now. But but I think practical difficulties is something that we need to take a look at again because of the fact of the sizing of the garage and where the garage doors are located on 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 the garage and how that is in 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 within the 20 feet. I think that in itself is something that 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 needs to be looked at and and reconsidered.
I think we're good. I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Troutman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chrisnix. So I just ask one more time, is there anybody else that would like to speak on the public hearing?
I do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, having hearing hearing no other individuals that want to speak, I would move that we close the the public hearing. Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
The public hearing motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take a roll call vote to close the hearing?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, Analyst Martinez-Govina. I do not have a motion to table the item, given the discussion and the requested we had previously on the question that I had regarding the applicant and the city working together on on coming into compliance. Member Wayland.
Just to continue the discussion, I I think I'll be a little more direct on what I said before. I think it really it continues to come down to that second point and that the things that seem clear to me and if, I mean, at some point, we just need to to vote on it. But if Councilmember Troutman has more to say on this, I I would love to hear it. He certainly, you certainly have a lot more legal expertise than I do. But it seems to come down to two key points, the the idea of not being caused by the landowner. That one, as I am understanding it from our city attorney, is that all legal precedent classifies a contractor as being being equated with the the landowner. And two, that I mean, the the only thing I've heard now offered as a like what what the practical difficulty is is the width of the garage. And I I struggle to to find something that more I mean, that that literally was created by the landowner. And so I it sounds certainly like there's some been some unfortunate miscommunication between the the contractor between at and I even my ability to read plans is is limited. But at some point, there was a a plan with a complying driveway is how I understand it, that came from the contractor, maybe not from the homeowner. And so I I think, again, it it really, for me, comes down to the fact that I I have yet to hear any reason that would fulfill the second requirement to grant a variance. And so if Councilmember Troutman, I don't know if you had more to say on that. But if you or anyone else has something to offer there, I I would love to hear it because the as as staff mentioned, this is not a a fun decision, but I I can't see any other direction based on the facts. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember.
Sure. And and it looks like I, you know, I I may be the minority report here, and that's that's okay. I can I can live with that. And and I think I I I came out the same way on this previously when we had a similar a similar case. But but what I would say is just looking, even looking at the variance that was granted for the garage. There, there's a, it it wasn't, the standard wasn't, is it impossible? Is it impossible to to build? They they were allowed to build a larger garage. And so it wasn't an impossibility. It was a practicability. What was was this a practical different difficulty, not an impossible difficulty? And so so this is, in one sense, a a problem of their of their own making. But in the in the other sense, this is also a problem of the city's creation. The city said you can build a garage this big. And now the city is also saying simultaneously, you have to, you have to build a driveway that's smaller than the garage that you built so that the the cement apron falls with inside the inside the doors of the of the garage, which is not not normal, makes it hard to get in and out, which I think is to to return to the plan, that's a practical difficulty. It's not an impossibility. It's a practical difficulty. And and so this was a practical difficulty. It was of their agents making, which again, I this was the first time I'd heard that we'd looked at case law on that. As of last week, I I didn't believe we had looked at case law. I think it would be worth looking at case law if that's the case. And and I just want to mention, just because Councilmember Garcia represented this, I'm not casting aspersions on anybody's character. And at at all. I'm just, I'm just saying what I heard was just an opinion. Everybody makes opinions. And everybody didn't have the the benefit that I had of sitting with the Chrisnicks and looking at the email correspondence and getting a statement from their contractor, which just confirmed in my mind. I was initially suspicious. And what then became resolved in my mind that this was not the case. And so so that's, that's why I said, not that anybody has done anything has has any any defect in chara- character. I I find it so just surprising that this this driveway has created so much energy in our community, and people were so passionate in the the planning commission and passionate here. But that's, that's what I, if there's case law, there's case law. I haven't heard that. If there's no other way to read this statute, then there's no other way to read the statute. But I would, I would read it differently and I would, I would think it's a, it's certainly a practical difficulty, not an impossibility, but a bit of practical difficulty.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland and Councilmember Supple.
I just will say, I know it's not pertinent to the decision, the the literal vote, but certainly pertinent to the situation. My, I guess my understanding and and maybe there's, I I'll just ask, I don't want to make any assumptions. To I'll ask staff in, I mean, the applicants have stated their goal is to bring this into compliance. That's the city's goal. Is it, is the code written in such a way that the 20 foot requirement will literally require like the door to land on some dirt? Or is there a a compromise of of having like a flare that meets the the garage doors as they exist?
You know, I'll speak in generalities, Councilman Wayland. Certainly, there are, there are ways to make this work. Melissa knows the specifics about the driveway width requirements. I would say it, the, as the applicant stated, the curb cut that they pulled permits for, that their contractor pulled permits for, was a 20 foot curb cut. The garage width of the structure was known at the planning commission. I believe that's also when a 20 foot driveway was shown, was at the planning commission prior to prior to the variance request. What was not shown on the plans was the door width. And so the planning commissioners nor the planning staff would have had any idea how wide the doors themselves were. It's, I don't believe it's all that uncommon to have a 20 foot driveway that very close to the house flares for a wider garage opening. And I believe Assistant Director Paleman talked about a a solution where we would allow the driveway width to be greater, closer to the house, where the the sidewalk is closer to the house. So there is a solution, I believe, to have a wider apron to the garage doors that allow both a car and a person getting in and out of their car to I I don't want to overspeak because Melissa knows more about the specifics of the ordinance and the specifics of the site plan. So if she has something to add.
No, I I did just want to add that the the plan that was approved by the planning commission is included in your packet. And it shows the garage, and then it shows a 20 foot driveway. Your John is correct. It does not show a door width. That wasn't something that was considered, and it wasn't something that was brought up by the applicant, that it would be problematic for them to go down to that 20 foot width. It was resubmitted with a 20 foot wide driveway. Further, the solution that we had proposed to the contractor, which apparently was not committed or not communicated to the applicant tonight, was that there could be this sidewalk that extends from the existing sidewalk in front of the garage, essentially leaving the driveway wider in front of the garage, but calling it part of the walkway. That is a solution that we have proposed there. We have not proposed asking the applicant to cut the driveway immediately against the the garage.
Other council comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm thinking it's very unfortunate that the contractor didn't communicate with the applicant. That created an unfortunate situation. But from the city's standpoint, we have to consider the three points. And I don't think we meet the criteria for that second point. So I guess I would have to say I would be upholding the planning commission. However, I do hope that we can work with the applicants to do something like may have been suggested so that they can come up with some way to bring it into compliance and and make it work. Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I would want to make the motion that we upheld uphold the planning commission's decision and recommendation.
I'll second that. Oh, thank, sorry. I'll second that.
Attorney City Attorney Tejan.
Mayor, I just want to, I certainly, going back to Councilmember Garcia's motion, I just want to clarify that it would be, in addition to what she said, it would also be adopting the resolution denying the appeal. So just just to make that clear. Thank you.
You, Attorney Tejan, the motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there additional questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Wayland.
Just a point of clarification. I'm guessing I know the answer to this, but just wanted to confirm with Councilmember Garcia. Are you comfortable with the addition that our city attorney added?
You mean about the result? What exactly?
That she added the the resolution? I just wanted to confirm, since you were the one who made the motion, that you're comfortable with that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Stark.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. I do recall somebody, a council member, bringing up the topic of the timing of coming into compliance. And so if it might be appropriate to tack on to the motion that the applicant provide the Community Development Director with their plan for coming into compliance. What I would say is normally the actual act of coming into compliance would be 60 days. Because this wouldn't entail, the plan wouldn't entail actual physical work. I would ask that they provide me with a plan within certainly no more than 45 days.
Right, so the ask from Director Stark is to include in the motion that the applicant provide a plan for coming into compliance within 45 days. Is that correct?
Correct.
That sounds reasonable, and I and I will make that add that to the vote to the motion.
Councilmembers.
I'm okay. I'm okay with both changes. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Garcia and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there additional comments or questions from Councilmember on the item? All right, Analyst Martinez-Govina, if you could please take the roll call vote.
Mayor Regan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Garcia.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. It sounds like there's going to be follow up with staff and the applicant. And I'll move to the next item. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider a resolution approving the commencement of organizing solid waste collection between the city of Richfield and licensed residential collectors as per Minnesota Statute 115A.94. The city is looking to organize collection predominantly for the economic and environmental benefits, ensuring that all residents have adequate waste management services and are paying the same rates for these services is essential to making the system more equitable for residents who historically subsidize those who are able to negotiate lower rates. Organized collection helps the city streamline education to residents about proper waste disposal, including curbside recycling, organics recycling, bulky item recycling, and reuse opportunities. This helps the city collectively send less trash to landfills and incinerators, which also contributes to county and state goals regarding waste reduction. This effort also aligns with several of the city's sustainability goals, including those outlined in the Climate Action Plan, Richfield's Green Step Cities Work, and the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The environmental benefits include less air pollution from having more efficient truck routes. Fewer trucks and more efficient routes also means safer driving throughout the city, with the former being one of the most common complaints residents have had historically. I know we we just had a a work session about this and would encourage residents who want the full details to listen to that recording as soon as that becomes available in the next few days. But do staff have any more you'd like to add now to this item?
Oh, Rachel, sorry, I didn't see that.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Wayland. I can speak a little bit to the background if council would wish to hear that and kind of go over some of what was discussed in the work session earlier.
go over some of what was discussed in the work session earlier for those who who might be watching this meeting, if that's desired.
That'd be great.
Okay, great. So Richfield has had a number of waste-related efforts over the past few years. Most notably, probably the organics drop-off program that was started after residents had activated, resident activism asked for it and, you know, we received a community grant from Hennepin County to establish this program and it was very well received by the community and it's an extremely popular program. After that, staff started looking at next steps to increase participation and encourage waste reduction and proper generation and disposal. And residents were actually asking for things like curbside organics. And so we started down the process of looking at options for the city to, you know, in to have services like curbside organics in an economically beneficial way. So, you know, lower prices, higher participation, things like that. And so we've been doing research over the past year plus about different avenues like organized collection and what the legal proceedings are and what the statute requirements are. As we've discussed, there is a specific statute for organizing and so that lays out the framework and the rules and requirements for cities to follow in negotiations with licensed collectors and things like that. So we've had several work sessions over the past year plus. And this has been the culmination of following council direction to look at a model that best serves residents and that for Richfield is organizing solid waste services, which includes garbage recycling and in the future, curbside organics as well. This achieves lower rates for all of these services instead of just piecemealing one thing at a time. And it provides other economic and environmental benefits that Councilmember Wayland has laid out as well. So we're at the point in the process where we are working to officially follow all those legal channels and submit or publish public notice and notify collectors and notify the public and start doing more advanced public engagement education as we enter this process. We have heard from the public a lot of their priorities and concerns about, you know, the current system, concerns about, you know, any sort of different system. And so this process is all about understanding the education that goes into what? What is the specific statute that we have to follow? What does that mean? What could a future system look like for residents? You know, what does that mean in terms of number of trucks? What does that mean in terms of pricing? What does it mean? What services might be required? What services are optional, things like that, and really making sure that everyone's on the same page. So as we look to do that, like Councilmember Wayland said, a lot of the process and the timeline was laid out in the work session. We also have published the organized collection webpage on the city website. So I do encourage any residents who have questions to check out the city website. It's under the Sustainability and Recycling tab under Residents. Or if they want to reach out directly to me, my contact information is on the city website as well. So I can take any questions that might be here.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? I'm Director Merkel.
Yeah, I would just like to add too, if there are residents that may not be aware that there are state, county, and our local sustainability goals in which the organized collection will help us reach those goals. In our Climate Action Plan, it's outlined that by 2022, we would like to have organized collection implemented for a lot of the sustainability reasoning, but also because Hennepin County has ordinance 13 that asks all cities with 10,000 or more residents must have curbside organics collection available by January 1st, 2022. And the state legislature also has a goal of reaching a 75% recycling rate goal in the metro by 2030. And in 2019, we were only at 49%. So we have a long way to go. And organized collection helps ensure everybody is offered services that will hopefully increase the behaviors to help us reach those sustainability goals.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions? Councilmember Supple.
That was going to be my question. Do you want comments now or just questions? Go ahead and.
Yeah, either.
I was thinking about this the other day and the history of how it all came about. Because Representative Slocum, who was representing a good share of Richfield, was the person that put the legislation, the bill forward in the legislature to begin with, to have a process for implementing organized collection. And so that's, this has been under discussion for quite some time. And I think back to before the pandemic, when I would be on garbage days, driving to work. And you would be having to dodge the garbage trucks and the school buses. And I just think it's a safety concern. If if we have, it's a wonder that no one was hurt in all of this. So I'm thinking that it's a good move because it'll reduce the wear and tear on the roads. It will get fewer trucks out on the streets. Also, I think if they're making more frequent stops, their speed's going to be reduced. So there's less chance of children being run over and that type of thing. So just having driven through that obstacle course and all of the different things, I think it's a much better system if we come up with an organized system. And I know they talked about a lot of other things in the report, but that safety factor and also not getting all the wear and tear on the streets is, were some of the deciding factors for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Other comments, questions from council members? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Director Jessica Merkel and Rachel Lindholm for a great work session that we just had. And it's not, it's not all the time where we have a proposed action that saves saves the community money, is great for the environment, is great for public safety. And in all, all in one, all in one action. And this this seems to make sense on a lot of different levels. And and I appreciate all that recognize the the level of work that we have to to get this done. And so I just want to say thank you and just say that this is, this is an idea that that a lot of other communities have found useful. It's good to look at this like a utility and I'm glad we're treating it that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember.
I've, I've said it before and will say again that when I first ran for office and I purposely asked like really open-ended questions when I went door knocking about like what people want to see in the future is if there's any one thing you could change in Richfield, what would it be? And I think more than double any other topic that came up unprompted was the desire for organized collection. And and this, this decision, I mean, it impacts everyone on a weekly basis. And so it's, it's a big deal. There's lots of, lots of reasons for supporting it and I think residents know that and are excited about this. I do know there are a lot of folks though with questions. I would really recommend checking out the the webpage. Reach out to any of us on council, reach out to Rachel, our sustainability specialist. If you've got questions either about the process or want to provide input, we'll certainly be doing a lot more engagement over time. And I think the last thing I wanted to say is just, I have had a few residents reaching out with questions and felt like, oh, this is happening really fast, like there's already a decision about it today. And just want to clarify that we are, I mean, clearly you've heard from the council, there's strong support for this. But today's decision is to start the process. That this is, there will be a final decision later. When exactly is going to depend on how long the different steps of this take, that this, this decision more than any other decision, maybe not any other decision, but most decisions the council makes has like a very clear process laid out that we do need to vote today to start. But then there will be lots of opportunities to learn more, to share your ideas. And ultimately then, when the final vote comes, a public hearing and the the final decision, which would then have the details of what happened through the process and negotiations and all that. So please, please do reach out soon, but know that this is, this is going to be several months in the making and that's on purpose to to hear from everyone. So we thank you in advance for being part of this process. And just will say again that I too am really, really excited about this.
Thank you, Member Wayland. Rachel?
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to echo a bit of what Councilmember Wayland said. I know that if, you know, residents are out there and not following every city council meeting agenda, every work session agenda, they might not be aware of this development, which has been in process for years. But I do want to encourage all residents, no matter where they're at in this process, to seek out the the work session that we just had earlier this evening. I think that provides a lot of answers and, you know, kind of lays the groundwork for for this topic. No matter where you're coming from, I think that'll help provide a lot of answers for residents. But as Councilmember Wayland said, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone, no matter what their feedback is about this process and what they think about the topic. Councilmember Wayland's right, this, this is an ongoing issue. There will be, you know, public hearing, there's chance for public comment at every point. You know, certain aspects of the process, like negotiations, might be confidential to some level. But, you know, our goal is to be as transparent and as engaged with the public as possible. We recognize how important this topic is to communities, including Richfield. So I just want to reiterate that we are, we're putting out as much information as possible and hoping to reach members of the community wherever they are.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions on the item from council members? All right, I'll just add, I know that staff, both staff and council members have talked about the multiple benefits of why we're starting this process. There's a lot of detail, whether it's on our, on the work sessions that we've had in the PowerPoint or on the website or in the council packet. So there's plenty of concrete examples, but I just want to talk about the big, big picture and why this makes sense for the community and the city. So when we look at the core values of Richfield, we have leading the way. And I would say, I actually don't think we're coming close to leading the way necessarily on this issue because a lot of of our surrounding communities are doing much better. We're on the bottom two communities in the whole county in our rates for recycling and need to do much better. You know, we're in the process of offering organics that will really help continue our path forward with sustainability. And this is just another step in that direction that will help us catch up and be leading the way in this area. Being responsive to all the different needs, pressures, and interests of our community, this as staff and council have stated, this brings multiple benefits to multiple groups of residents across the whole city. So it is going to be responsive, especially in the area of affordability and looking at distributing things equitably across the whole community. And then we have accountability. And as outlined on this item, community members will be going, going on this path with us and will be a part of this process. And they have been a part of this process in focusing on sustainability in our city, whether it's been through the commission, the Sustainability Commission, the Organics Task Force, and in this process as we move forward. So we are here to lead on this issue together in partnership with our residents. Then we have community-centered and focusing on equity. So again, we talked about the benefits to our community and how this will help us in achieving equity in in the consistency of what we'll be doing, but also hopefully being more affordable for a lot of our residents. And in two areas that we have just done a tremendous amount of work in the city in the past several years, has been advancing equity and focusing on sustainability and really embedding that across the whole city and community and everything we do. And this is just another project that is community-wide that will advance those two priorities of ours. So I am very personally excited to support this work and do this in partnership with our residents because it is in complete alignment with the values and the direction that we are going in as a city. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I, Councilmember Wayland here. I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution approving the commencement of organizing solid waste collection between the city of Richfield and licensed residential collectors as per Minnesota statute 115A.94.
Councilmember Troutman, I'll second.
Thank you. Are there additional comments or questions from council member? And I'm wondering if Analyst Martinez Gavina could just explain, it sounds like Councilmember Garcia is having difficulty with her microphone working, is that correct?
Yes, and she just alerted me that she will be voting yes on this motion, just in case she doesn't get her, her microphone to work.
Okay, thank you. So any additional comments from council members before we take a roll call vote? All right, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take a roll call vote?
Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia, as stated, she mentioned she would be voting yes. Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved. So please look for more information and we will be starting this process. Thank you, everyone, for helping on the item. Okay, the next item. Second here. There we go. All right, I have too many papers out. The next item is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've all heard by now, the pandemic is surging again in Minnesota. It is also surging locally. Last week, Richfield had an average case count each day of about 25 to 30 cases. But Sunday, we jumped from Sunday to Monday to 107 cases. We're back down in the 25 to 35 range for the past two days. Also in Minnesota, case increases and hospitalizations are higher than the last peak. Right now, there's 22 intensive care beds left in the metro area. We're also seeing an unprecedented number of staff that are testing positive or needing to quarantine due to exposure. This, this is different than the last peak also. Recent increase is starting to impact our ability to deliver services. And so we have, we've, the core team has met. I have also reached out to all directors, asking me what are their plans to tighten up? I can highlight some of those now. We have canceled all in-person recreation until further notice. Motor, our motor vehicles will, it's already closed. We did that because we couldn't handle the election on motor vehicle and they're transitioning to the new state software. But they will likely stay closed to the public and only do the drop box until the situation stabilizes. Our other services, including passport, will be by appointment only. We're asking more of our staff to work from home and we're asking them to work from home more often. As I said, the department directors are submitting plans to me that further define their mitigations and the ideas and the challenges that they have. I'll be sharing those with the core team on Thursday, so we may have updates. I just signed a contract that will allow our public safety staff to do the swab tests here at City Hall. And that'll be for our essential staff. We'll be able to get the results very quickly on that. That'll help when we have someone testing positive, so we can quarantine them quickly. I also just approved the purchase of 250 saliva test kits. We can use those for staff testing, but also if Bloomington Public Health define, identifies any hotspots in the community. We're also meeting with Bloomington Public Health this week and the cities of Adana and Bloomington on Friday to determine other strategies to help contain the surge. We're emphasizing with our staff and with the community to make smart choices. You know, the governor discussed that most of the positive cases, it's not from work exposures. It's from social gatherings. I just recently sent a message to our staff. Uh, I just recently sent a message to our staff, you know, asking them to not only make smart choices at work, but also in their personal lives. Because the, you know, the virus doesn't know boundaries. Um, you know, I, I also emphasize that our, the Richfield residents are depending on them and our other customers. And so we're, we're concerned. I know all of you are as well. We're working on it. I would expect more updates later in the week. Um, I also noticed that Chief Ed Thorn is still with us in the meeting. So if you have further questions, he may be able to add as well.
Thank you so much for the update, City Manager Rodriguez. Any questions or comments from council members on the COVID update? Councilmember Wayland?
Um, I guess I, I think I know the answer, but we'll ask, is there any, uh, new advice to community members or just continuing to, to follow the guidelines, staying home when sick, social distancing, not meeting in groups? Um, and I mean, obviously all of that still applies. Is there any, uh, new recommendations based on the, the current situation?
Guidance is all the same. That has not changed. It's just that people, we relaxed a bit over the summer. You know, the cases had stabilized, uh, people relaxed a bit. And, um, it's mostly the contact tracing is, is showing that it's these social gatherings, um, that are, are the, the major spreaders. Um, but the one definition of close contact changed somewhat recently in that it used to be, um, and, and Chief Ed Thorn may have to help me or, or our mayor may have to help me. It used to be ten minutes of close contacts of less than six feet, um, at a time. But now it's a cumulative of fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period.
Wow. Are there other questions or comments, Councilmember Supple?
Um, I just had a comment that was pertinent to this. Um, during the meeting, um, tonight at seven thirty, a notice went out to the community from the Richfield Public Schools. And I would urge anybody that, um, has children in the schools, so please check their email because there is going to be a transition plan to full distance learning. I won't go into all the details, but that went out to the community tonight at seven thirty PM. So please check your emails. Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman?
I just wanted to say thank you to, uh, City Manager Rodriguez for her leadership in the middle of, of this pandemic and throughout this pandemic. And to the extent that we have a platform here and we can encourage people to be compliant, um, with, uh, with the guidelines, I just want to encourage people, uh, to, to do that. And, um, it's not, it's not pleasant. Um, as, as most people know, this is a disease that's impacted my family, um, personally and lethally. And, uh, so it's, it's a real, it's, it's, and I know it's, it's become controversial, it's become political. But, um, the, the disease is, is apolitical. The disease is a killer. And, um, and it slows people down. And so I just want to encourage everybody to the extent that they are physically able to, uh, maintain those, those social distance protocols.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right, is there anything else on the City Manager's Report, City Manager Rodriguez?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you much for the update. Um, the next item is Claims and Payroll. It would normally go to Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia, do you, is your microphone working? Doesn't look like it. Uh, Councilmember Supple, did you have a question?
Um, she just sent a text and said her microphone was not working.
Got it. Okay, all right. Would you like to move Claims and Payroll, Councilmember Supple?
I would be pleased to move Claims and Payroll.
Thank you.
Councilmember Troutman, I will second.
Thank you. Claims and Payroll has been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Garcia? And she is currently in contention. You said yes. Uh, Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Claims and Payroll has been passed. Um, I will pass it for hats off to hometown hits. I will pass it to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just have, I have a, a more, a more sober hats off today. Um, today is the second day for the trial of, uh, Michael Hari. And he's part of a, a group of three individuals who, uh, two of whom have pled guilty to coming, uh, to the Darul Farukh Mosque and bombing that mosque. And, um, and really violating that, not just, not just that space, but our, our entire community. And, uh, I think it's just important to lift up, uh, and this is the mosque, the masjid, excuse me, or the, the community center that's closest to, to, to Richfield. It's where our Richfield, um, Muslim residents, um, will, will often go and worship. And I, I think it's just important to call this out because at the time that the masjid or the community center was bombed, especially at the national level, um, that filtered through locally, there were allegations that the, this, this faith community actually did that to themselves. So not only were they victimized by, by these terrorists, but then they were, they were, they were twice accosted by people locally and nationally suggesting that they had done this to themselves. So it's really an important day, I think, to recognize how, how they, they've been impacted. And I want to take my hats off to both to, to our, our Muslim residents, but also to our non-Muslim residents because they still regularly are accosted by people protesting their place of worship. And they think of Richfield residents like Mara Glubka, who's not a Muslim. I'm not a Muslim. I'm, I'm a Christian. But, but they, but, but Mara and other, other Richfield residents go there every Friday when they're worshiping and they stand between people, they're taking pictures of children that are playing on playgrounds, harassing people as they're going to worship. That's an active, ongoing trauma to that community. And so I just want to take my hats off to, to my brothers and sisters who are suffering through this right now and they have an opportunity to be heard and hopefully get, uh, get justice as this gentleman gets their day in court. Um, but also for the Richfield residents that just recognize that we're all together and they're standing up for our, our Muslim neighbors. So hats, hats off to, to everybody and, uh, we wish for, for justice and Godspeed in this trial.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to take hats off to everybody that worked on the census and to, um, Blanca Martina, Martinez Gavina, who, um, helped spearhead that here in the city, who is with us here on the meeting. And thank you to everyone involved. Um, we surpassed our count, our percentage from two thousand and ten. We surpassed the state average and we surpassed the national average. And so kudos to everyone involved and especially executive, um, assist, or executive analyst, I'm tired, Blanca Martinez Gavina. So thank you so much for all of that because that was just really phenomenal that that happened. Um, and then, um, the Hennepin County is going to be mailing out the truth in taxation notices. So please watch for those. And I also want to, um, thank the people that are putting together the Honoring All Veterans Memorial, um, program tomorrow and all of our veterans in the community for their service. And, um, let's see, oh. And the last one is, um, I want to just thank all the members that have served on commissions this year and remind people that in December, you can apply to become a commissioner and that's a very important thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Wayland?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to give a huge hats off. Um, I know we did, uh, two weeks ago, but want to again give a huge hats off to our city clerk Beth Van Hoos for everything, um, during the election. I, uh, in my day job on election day, kind of last minute, had to help some, some people who were trying to assist voters and were getting flak from a, uh, city clerk in a city I won't mention, who was, uh, just had a very different attitude about, uh, their role. And I, I know Beth, in addition to putting in an insane amount of work, just is always focused on, in, in the elections work, like how do we let people's voices be heard? And I think that is absolutely the right orientation to have, um, of, yes, like following all the rules, but it, at its heart, like making sure as many people as possible are able to vote, um, and, and have their voice heard. And so I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that it was a, it would have been a lot of work in a normal year and was especially a lot of work given the pandemic. Um, so wanted to say thank you there. Um, and then also just wanted to, um, thank, uh, the staff, the commissioners, the residents, everyone who played a role in, uh, our new dog park. We had the ribbon cutting grand opening for that recently. Um, and happened, could not have asked for a better, uh, November day. It was nearly seventy degrees. There were over fifty, maybe even over seventy-five. Um, people there with dogs that were just excited about this new amenity. And, um, it's, I live pretty close to it. People are there all the time. It's exciting. So thank you to everyone who had a, a part in making that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Yeah, there's just so many thanks and accolades to pass around. I mean, our community has been pulling together, whether it's been in responding to COVID, um, you know, preparing for elections, working on census. And that's just been a joint effort between staff, community members, organizations. And you can hear from what everyone else is sharing, um, that folks, whether it is on staff or in the community, have been going above and beyond and that it has made quite a big difference, whether it's the census um, or helping with a smooth election process. Um, thank you to everybody, um, who, who has been helping with all of those efforts. And as we heard from City Manager Rodriguez, um, there are still tough times ahead with COVID. And so this is something that we're going to have to continue doing is pulling together as a, as a community, um, and getting through this. So thank you to everybody, whether it's city staff or our residents on all of these different initiatives that they've been working on together. Um, and then, uh, the Veterans Day event tomorrow was already mentioned and the Roosevelt Dog Park. Um, I'll just add that Give to the Max is starting, um, I believe it's next week, November fifteenth through the nineteenth. And it's an opportunity for community members to donate to, um, their favorite nonprofits doing great work in our own backyards. There are several, um, Richfield organizations that are participating in Give to the Max Day. One of them is the Richfield Historical Society. I know that the Richfield Foundation is participating. Um, and then our Veterans Memorial Group is also participating. And I'm guessing that there's other organizations here in Richfield. And our staff was going to put a communications together and list all of the different organizations. But I wanted to put Give to the Max Day on everybody's radar and please ask you to donate to the great Richfield organizations doing exceptional work, um, in our own backyards. And instead of having a wine fundraiser, the Richfield Foundation is going to be doing an online auction, um, and fundraising. So Give to the Max will be part of that. But again, our communities, our families, our residents are in need of our support and pulling together. And another concrete way to do that is donating through Give to the Max. So if you could please do that, we'd greatly appreciate it. And I think that is all I have. So we are done with our council agenda. Um, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.